Thank you. My computer was saying that my network connection is too slow, but that's okay. That reflects on the owner. So good morning, everyone, and welcome to the, um, our committee meeting. Unfortunately, Eric could not be present today, um, but I'm going to try to do my best to, um, to handle the meeting with your help. So, um, the first item in the agenda is really, um, the approval of the minutes, and they were going to, going to be very important topic of reviewing the African-American, Black and Puerto Rican Latino course of studies. So I will, that you had sort of suggested you were gonna, you wanna approve the minutes?
Yes, I saw, I saw move to approve the minutes.
Okay. So Malia, I need you to second it.
Second.
Any question, any comments, any opposition? All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay. Minutes are approved. So Irene, I turn to you for, um, a overview, and then we can begin to discuss the specifics of the topic.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you, Dr. Lopez and, um, committee members. Um, we are excited, um, as we continue in this process to present you with an update on the African-American, Black and Puerto Rican, Latino curriculum and course of study with our partners. Um, what we are learning, and I'm only new to the process, this has been, um, ongoing since last year, but, um, we are doing all of our effort, putting all of our efforts together to ensure that there's rigor and relevance, that we have many opportunities for, um, the delivery of this curriculum in multiple ways. Um, it really has been a change in mindset for everyone that, um, touches this curriculum. Um, one being that we are providing a statewide model curriculum for all of our learners and our teacher colleagues, that there is a clear focus on learning, um, and messaging this importance, interdisciplinary opportunities, and really lifting the level of learning and awareness throughout all of the topics presented. I do want to, um, welcome all of our members, but first, um, Dr. Melissa Hickey, who is, um, our Director of Reading, who has been involved in all of this work since the beginning, with, um, Stephen Armstrong, our Ed Consultant for Social Studies statewide, as well as Dr. Gladys Labus, who is, um, a recent partner in this work and, um, continuing our efforts through CIRC. What I would like to do now is turn it over to Dr. Labus, who can introduce our CIRC partners, and then we can provide you with an update on this curriculum. Dr. Labus?
Great. Yeah. Irene, before Gladys begins, Gladys, forgive me, I just wanna thank all of you for sending the material as I have time. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Gladys, go ahead.
You're welcome.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to first begin by introducing, uh, our CIRC partners. Um, so, uh, why don't we start with Ingrid? Ingrid, where are you? Can you just wave? Ingrid, can you say a few words?
Yes, thank you so much, uh, Dr. Labus. Ingrid Kennedy, I'm the Executive Director of CIRC, and it's definitely a pleasure for me to be with all of you today and to be able to hear the, uh, for all of you to be able to hear the wonderful work that has been developed in partnership with the State Department of Education. So I'm looking forward, uh, and definitely thank you so much for the invitation. Thank you, Dr. Labus.
Thank you. Paquita Smith, a consultant.
Good morning, everyone. I'm so happy and proud to be here today.
Nita Diaz.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Nita, like she said, and I'm also excited to introduce you our course of studies.
Thank you. Uh, Michelle LeBron.
Good morning. Michelle LeBron Griffin, Consultant for CIRC, a member of the team that has been working on the course of studies, and it's just truly been an honor to not only work the CIRC team, but the stakeholders across the state. So thank you for the opportunity.
And I have to also add, Michelle, she is the one that keeps us on target and on, uh, in focus. So thank you, Michelle. All right. Why don't we start quickly with the agenda? We're going to start, just to give us a, a, uh, a foundation, just to review quickly the legislative requirements, and we're gonna have the opportunity for input, we're gonna have dialogue about some of the materials that we have shared with you, uh, also the infrastructure support that will be also required, and the implement, ensure some implementations, considerations, and of course, question and answer. And we certainly want to get all this data prepared for our December 2nd, when we present this entire curriculum to the entire State Board of Education. Right. The history of it, it started in June 2019, and of course, this was envisioned to be a K-12 curriculum, but it turned out that it was more of 912, and the key is, it's an elective for high schools, uh, throughout Connecticut, and we need to say that it's the first integrated model in the state of Connecticut. As you well know, the state usually could develop standards, and then districts develop their curriculum, but we are developing, aligning it to curriculum and developing the curriculum for the district. And it's critical to understand that this is an elective course, full year. First semester is African-American Black, and then the second semester is Puerto Rican Latino curriculum. So it's, but it's one full year. And also, it's, uh, it focuses, and it's a spiraling concept, which means that it, some topics will get to repeat itself in different ways. It has about approximately 10 comprehensive study, unit studies. It's a two-prong inquiry-based approach, which means that it's knowledge-based, and just as critical, it is student identity, because we know by the research for the last 30 years, that Larson Billings and Banks and Jim Cummings all have stated that students need to see themselves in the curriculum. And this curriculum, according to the legislature, may, may be offered in 21, 22, and must, must be offered for 22, 23. So we have some high schools already that we call, will have, will be piloting for next semester, for next year, for this year, this curriculum. The requirements is the timeline that the state has put upon CIRC, because CIRC has been, uh, part of the legislation to help develop this curriculum, and the deadlines are very clear, by January 1st, 2021, uh, the school board was, uh, was to look at this, but according, but right now, what we're doing is, we're, December 2nd, these are just timelines that are, we cannot pass. So we are moving ahead, that's why I'm saying Michelle keeps us right on target, to be ahead of the timelines, and this is important, so we could have enough input and conversation regarding the legislation. Uh, so by 2021, the school board shall review, that's what the legislature says, by January 15, 2021, the school board, along with CIRC, would submit a description, which we will be submitting, uh, before then. Uh, but for 2022 and 2023, uh, the legislation, it's clear that an annual audit will be conducted, um, on how the curriculum is going. This is part of the legislation.
Thank you, Gladys. Um, Michelle LeBron Griffin, Consultant for CIRC, and my role is to share with you a little bit about the opportunities for involvement and input. So, yes, it was mentioned that there is an advocacy group that is very passionate about the work of this curriculum, and, um, the CIRC and State Department team actually see it as a very positive advocacy. Um, some mentionables, um, there was some concern in regards to teacher and student involvement, and so I'm happy to share with you that we had 150-member advisory group that broke into nine committees to really get this work done, um, in the year's time. There was multiple opportunities for cyclical and critical feedback, um, throughout the course of year, uh, those 150 members, there was about 60 representatives who broke into the committees, who did a lot of the heavy lifting. Uh, but each time it came back to advisory group, um, each of those members of the advisory group are various stakeholders across the state. It was very important for CIRC to be inclusive in regards to anyone who showed interest in being involved in the development of the course. So there's educators, there's students, there's community representatives, um, from museums, from, um, different projects and initiatives, uh, in different communities. There are historians and scholars from higher ed. Um, you, you can certainly go to our website at ctcirc.org/pa1912 to see what each of those members are, and to see what their roles were in regards to committee participation. One of the first things we did was we conducted a high school curriculum survey, to be certain we had a handle on what educators across the state were seeking in regards to this curriculum, but also what they were currently implementing. We learned that there were several, um, districts across the state, and 17 of those districts submitted some type of artifact or curriculum to us in relation to African-American or Latino studies. What we did learn is Gladys mentioned that there is no high school in the state that is implementing currently an integrated curriculum, nor did we find that at the national level. So this is really a pioneering, unprecedented effort. 350 respondents, um, were included in that survey, 217 of which were teachers who are on the front line, potentially those who are, were either teaching this course or department heads involved in overseeing, um, this course implementation. 62% of the respondents indicated they're ready. Um, so there was another concern that was shared by the advocacy group. Um, they just want to know what is the curriculum develop, curriculum materials, and will the professional learning be provided? So those were the two main concerns, um, from the teacher's forefront. There was a focus group survey for those who could not attend our live or virtual focus groups, so you'll see a small number of participation here. We also offered this to our youth, who maybe were under the age of 18 and weren't, um, able to access parent permission to participate in the live focus group. So we did offer the exact same questions, and so you'll see some of the very specific student responses here. A third of the survey, obviously, responses are from our students, and so they were looking for a deeper understanding of inequalities, a better understanding of backgrounds and cultures, interrationally, looking at real history beyond the stereotypes, and emphasizing not only difference, but difference as a strength, uh, looking at how we are relating our history, obviously, to current events and, and through pop culture. So these were some of the markers for us, um, as Irene was mentioning, and really driving and promoting the unit development. When we did our live focus groups, just to continue with that student participation theme, we had five specific focus groups of our 12 in total that were student-specific. And so you will see there, again, um, some themes here that they were seeking, and then at the bottom of the screen, you'll also see the remaining impressions from educators, parents, and community members. I think a strong piece, as Gladys mentioned, is that we're not only focused on the accuracy and the content knowledge, um, excuse me, accuracy of the history and the content knowledge, but also looking at supporting students' racial identity development through positive portrayals of these communities and the multiple perspectives of which they hold. I'm going to, um, with Ajit's support, just kind of come out of the PowerPoint screen for a moment, so that you can view, uh, an NBC clip that just came out last week, and so if you'll bear with me, Ajit, do I need to do anything special in the go-to meeting to show video?
Um, sorry, I didn't realize that you needed to show video with, um, your system audio, so I'm not sure, um, not sure what to suggest here. Um, I imagine if you play it, it's probably not gonna show the, um, not gonna play the audio for us. It might, it'll show the video, but I'm not sure if it's gonna show the audio as well.
Okay, I will, I will try, um, and just let me know if it, if it does not work.
Statewide movement led by students in 2019.
I can hear it.
Which in how and what they learn in their history courses.
Black and Latinx history will soon be. Part of education if approved in December. NBC Connecticut's Kyle Jones spoke with those who helped change history here in Connecticut.
With this class, you know, I, I make it, I'm like, I'm so excited to see what the kids are gonna think.
Social Studies teacher Adrian Solis is rewriting history. Next month, he'll help present the first statewide curriculum for Black and Latinx history to the Department of Education for approval. His goal for students.
Getting them to see there's more to history than what you've just been taught your whole life.
In May of 2019, the state passed a law requiring schools to offer Black and Latinx history courses to students. Agent Solis is one of more than 100 people who helped to bring it to life.
You usually learn about slavery, and then the civil rights movement, and then, I mean, it's just, that's it. And there's just, I feel, there's so much more.
Hampton students Madison Shelgren and Darius Cummings say young people want a more diverse curriculum.
The fact that we only learn about these two big things, which was, you know, emancipation, and then the end of segregation, it's, it's disturbing.
Darius says for students of color, lessons on topics like Huck Finn and the KKK can be repetitive and at times uncomfortable.
For you in that scenario where you're hearing yet again something that you already know, maybe this curriculum might offer you something to balance that out.
Yes, um, that's really, I think you really hit that one.
The State Education Resource Center of Connecticut developed a curriculum with more than 100 experts to focus on national and local history.
Of who the Black Panthers were in New Haven is going to be a part of it. Who in the NAACP from Hartford was involved in history?
It will also include the impact young people can have.
For example, we have a unit that says that 60,000 Latinos turn 18 every month, and they get to register to vote.
The curriculum development team worked with students from across the state, some from right here at Henry Abbott Technical High School in Danbury. Those students were very specific about the history they wanted to learn, not just the oppression, but about those who overcame, those who made change, and those who inspired.
Well, I just appreciate that, because they didn't just say, oh, we're gonna teach this, this, and this, and that's it. They spoke to us, they said, how would you feel? What would you guys like to learn about?
These three seniors in Solis's class gave feedback to developers. They say the course isn't about what you have to learn, it's what you want to learn.
The people of Color that take this course, I feel like after they take it, will feel more empowered.
There's also a guide to help teachers navigate those conversations.
Your phrasing, your, uh, sentence structure, your tone, it's, it's all very sensitive, and it should be addressed sensitively.
It will be the first statewide Black and Latinx history course in the country, and these students are honored.
That was just a full part of everything, the whole course and him.
In New Haven, I'm Kyle Jones, NBC Connecticut Investigates.
Okay, I think you see the PowerPoint again here. So we couldn't have said it better, um, than what you saw in the video from our youth. Um, so the only thing I would add is that we also had an expert review panel that looked at the units of study, um, and our course description and learning objectives, and gave us this type of feedback. There was 10 members of that committee, seven of which were at the national level, who gave us, um, their impressions in regards to not only the accuracy, uh, but also some great materials and resources that we could utilize, and also as the suggestions you see here, to ensure, as Irene mentioned, that we have a rigorous, robust, and spiraling curriculum. One of the, um, representatives on the expert review panel, her name is Dr. Raquel Ortiz from the Center of Puerto Rican Studies, stated in her comments to us, um, when we had our live debrief session, uh, together, that she actually thinks that this course has the potential to be a national model, and so we're very, very excited to be able to present that to you today. So I'm going to ask Nita and Paquita to join me at this time. We have shared materials with you, including the course description, that also has an excerpt in it for a program of studies for high schools across the state for consistency, recognizing that course approvals in many, uh, local districts are happening right now. It was important that we have that draft information out to the field. We also provided districts with the draft learning objectives and essential questions, the scope and sequence, um, we also shared with you, just to give you a synopsis of our units of study, so you could see how, um, some of the learning objectives trend through or the course throughout the two semesters, and also how some of the concepts spiral throughout the two semesters. Uh, we are prepared to share, um, two draft units, um, from Semester 1, African-American Black Unit 1, and from Puerto Rican Latino Unit 4. Each of these units, um, show the accuracy in regards to the content knowledge, but also show the beauty and contributions, um, to support students' identity development, which was why they were chosen as samples for you for today. These units have been reviewed by our advisory group, by the expert review panel, as was mentioned, by you, and they are in process. Um, actually, the convening this week will be our Integration and Assessment Committee, who will be looking at how the standards align with the knowledge and skills that align with the assessments to document. Um, uh, many of the assessments that you, um, have seen throughout the units are project-based, which masters the inquiry-based approach. Uh, there's a balance of both formative and summative, uh, there's home links to support students with their, uh, learning as well, and these draft units are not yet available for public dissemination. We do just want to, uh, make that clear, as in the legislation, um, they will be revealed, if not sooner than, obviously, from the State Department, but no later than July of 2021. So at this point, we open the floor to the committee in regards to areas of most interest that you would like to, um, you know, discuss or explore further, examine, um, so any of the, um, options you see here are options that I have available to put live on the screen for the discussion.
Members of the committee, what would you like to see? I would like to see, you know, the specifics, so, you know, I don't know my Malia and I will, Malia especially since you're leaving. Would you be, um?
Yeah, no, I.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Estella. Um, I don't actually have anything specifically. I wish that I could be here to see all of it, because I'm not sure where I would even start to say, let me see this. So I don't want to interrupt your flow, but I do appreciate the opportunity just to be able to say that I am incredibly excited about this, and, and kudos to all the very hard work to get all this put together. Um, I've already talked to my kids about, and, and their school, about whether or not they'll be implementing it, and I know they've said that they plan to have it offered next year. Um, my kids are, are looking at their schedule to see if what they had already plotted out is even going to allow them to take it. Um, so that's the potential disappointment for them, is, uh, that, you know, getting into their last, their senior year, uh, pretty much already knowing what they have to take to graduate. Um, so I just wanna, I appreciate the moment, just to at least be able to express the, the kudos and appreciation for all of your work, and, and, uh, please move forward as, as the rest of the committee needs.
Thank you, Malia. I will, uh, what is it that you would like to see?
No, I, I'd like, I have to echo what you said, Estella, because it, um, I, I took the weekend to review some of the, uh, the drafts, and, um, and it, and I just wanna, and later on, once the presentation is done, some, some of the tidbits, and then I, then I have a couple of questions, and, and, and take it from there.
Okay, so if you, if you don't mind, Dennis Dell, um, the, you know, the course description is what it is, you've seen the objectives, why don't we allow Paquita and Nita to maybe give a little bit of an overview of each of the units? I, I think that would be, uh, the most beneficial for us.
Right, absolutely. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I wanna feel like a student, and I wanna see what I'm going to be doing.
So Paquita, go ahead, and Paquita, just, um, be sensitive to time, it's, uh, 9:56.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry, Paquita, if you don't mind unmuting.
Good morning, everyone. What I'm hearing with, with honor is the Unit 4. Oh, you, you pulled up Unit 1? Okay, well, this is Unit 1 of Semester 1 for African-American History, Where We Come From, Intro to African Origins and Contributions of Ancient African Empires. So Michelle, we'll scroll through, you'll see that we have a unit summary, our desired, um, results, you'll see the alignment of the social studies standards, Common Core, um, English Language Proficiency, as well as social justice for students' identity development. We have learning outcomes that are stated in our course objectives and essential questions, and opportunities for students to inquire and self-reflect. So in this unit on African Origins, describe and analyze the role of African, Africa, in the evolutionary development of humanity, and analyze the construct of race as it, evolution in the world's conflict. We also, um, have pre-assessments embedded in, um, the units of study, as well as, as Michelle said, the formative check-ins and performance tasks. This, um, unit of study, um, starts out with us introducing the whole semester. We talk about how to make this safe space for students to have reflective, respectful dialogue, which, um, includes some tough conversations about race and racism. We then lift them right to the continent of Africa in all of its glory as the, um, the place where humanity began. You'll also see that we have the timelines, resources available for the teachers to, um, extend the learning opportunities, the big ideas, and some recommended activities. For me, the highlight of this unit for the students, if you could scroll down to, um, I don't know if many of you are aware of Massemusa and his caravans of gold, with students understanding all of the contributions, the wealth, the arts, the sciences, and the technologies that came out of Africa to set the stage for their learning for this year's course. That's what excites me, to see Africa and how ancestors of Africa are continuing to make history, even this week! Even this past week, we're still making awesome history.
Great.
And there's also opportunities to pull in the arts, the scientists, reading, English Language Arts as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you have the equivalent for the Latin, uh, Latino course?
Yes, I do. So Nita Diaz will present for this portion, and this is, uh, Unit 4. So, uh, African-American Semester 1, Unit 1, so that's how we're opening the course. Now, this actual unit will probably fall around the March time of the second semester.
Okay.
So, good morning. So what you're seeing in front of you is our Unit 4, and this unit, we titled it Resistance and Defiance. So what does resistance look like when, uh, students will be learning about Latin American revolutions from Spain, as well as Latin American revolutions? So our unit is going to analyze those power structures, and also our students are going to learn about who those heroes were, and what does it have to do with me? What do I know about these, uh, revolutionaries, the ideal of that utopia of una America, one America? So we, like, uh, Semester 1, we have history and different element, uh, elements, as well as the CEP standards, the Connecticut English Language Proficiency Standards. Some of our units and the resources that we're putting together do have, uh, resources in Spanish for students whose home language, uh, is, is Spanish, and they prefer to read it in Spanish, so we are giving that opportunity as well, so that no one feels left behind, especially when it comes to this semester. So Michelle, if you don't mind scrolling down. So the first, one of the enduring understandings, our students are going to be learning about the injustices and what the power structures were, but despite any injustices and any independence or revolt, our students are going to see what we call that beauty piece, you know, that any, when they revolted from Spain, they had different ideals, so the students can compare and, and contrast, and so they are also going to have the opportunity to compare and contrast in terms of Puerto Rican, uh, quote, independence movement and what that looks like. We don't really have, we're not an independent country, but... but students are going to understand a little bit of that history as well. So can you scroll down? So the students are going to, first, one of the things I want to show you here, highlight, is just so that you can see the spiraling. In one of the, the first lesson they're going to study here is what we call that Haitian Revolution. Why are we adding the Haitian Revolution here? And it is because we know historically that the Haitian Revolution was kind of that precursor, that framework that helped other Caribbean and Latin American countries to say, wow, like, they did it, so why can't we not do it? So we felt that in here, they're going to look at that from the perspective of that, with that defiance. And Haiti was able to do it, so can we? So that's how we're looking at it. In unit and semester one, they're looking at it from a different perspective. But I do want you to see that we kind of are looking at this framework. So the students understand that without the Haitian Revolution, perhaps the, as a precursor, that would be really helpful for them to learn about. So we also have, in one of our units, you know, our students are going to have the opportunity to look at racial and ethnic differences, as well as gender roles during these revolutions. And they're going to study things about Puerto Rico, the Puerto Rican Independence Party. What does that look like? What was the Puerto Rico Popular Army? So there would be a lot of topics here and things that they may not have heard about, which is what we want. But we are looking at this for them to learn, what does, what does this look like when we talk about Lady Ramortaza? When we talk about Grito de Lares, right? Why was it done? And things like that. Then they also have what we call that timeline of movers and shakers. So literally, this unit is about them studying, like Arturo Schomburg, José Martí, which were shakers and movers about, you know, revolting and independent movement in Latin America and as well as Puerto Rico. And one of the activities that we want for them is they're going to be asked to create, like, you know, study one of the heroes, the shakers and movers, and then create a monologue from their speeches and then present to class in many different ways so that they can know and understand what it is that, why they are being called shakers and movers. That's pretty much it.
You have, you have in one, yeah, I'm sorry. You have in one unit, you talk about the Moors. Could you, I don't remember where I saw it exactly. Could you tell me a little bit about how the context where you're talking about the Moors?
Estella, the Moors? The Moors, you said, Estella, or the movers and shakers?
M-O-O-R-S, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna go back. Yes.
Are we going back to unit one?
Yes, I am, if you wouldn't mind speaking to that.
So what is the question?
The question, I saw Moors. And I know, you know, for the, I don't know if that's in the historical background of Spain. I'm not sure how you're going to be talking about Moors. So I'm just interested in understanding better that question. You know, I don't, I don't have any criticism, just understanding better how you plan to discuss it.
Okay, we're gonna go through.
Remind me, I'm trying to find it.
It's toward the, it's toward the end, you're almost there.
Thank you. Here we are.
So this, 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 excuse me, something popped up. So as you can see, it does talk about Spain, Southern Europe, and parts of France. In the overview, these are historical contexts for the teacher.
Okay.
And the presence in Spain and Portugal.
Okay.
Is there something specific that you want to see in terms of what?
No, no, I just wanted to understand how it was gonna be used. It was gonna be used, okay. So when you're talking about the, like, when you talk about Africa, you're gonna talk about Spain and the presence of the Moors and?
Yep, that historical perspective.
Okay, that sounds good, yeah, that sounds good. And then I'm, I want to allow I will, that Erin, if they have questions regarding. I do have other questions, so. Go ahead, I will let Erin.
Yes, I wanted to emphasize, because I know, Estella, you immersed me as becoming a student in the classroom, right? And that's very important, that we, we put ourselves in the shoe of the student so that, so that this curriculum becomes effective for all students. So I, so as I was sitting in the classroom, as Estella started me to put, put myself in the shoes of a student, I was saying, I, I want this curriculum to look where there's a diverse group of peers in my classroom. Okay, that this is not an African-American and a Puerto Rican-Latino classroom. Because we all know that, you know, we're humans and we tend to gravitate and be insocialized with only our own group. You know, I mean, I see it in higher education, I see it. And so we have to learn from each other. So, so my question is to any of you, you know, how are you going to really make this a selling point to students that, that, that are really going to appreciate the culture of African-American and Puerto Rican Latinos who are not African-American and Latinos?
So Paquita, I see you unmuted. I would offer, but go ahead, Paquita.
I have been a part of the focus groups. And I will tell you, from the start, we had a lot of diverse representation of students interested from all ethnic and racial backgrounds. And our students are ready for this course. If you saw the highlights of the protests in the summer of 2020, you saw people who were white, black, brown, Asian, indigenous, even people in Europe, ready to move and to make change. So I feel like if we market this to our youth in their networks, that we won't have enough room for them. They're gonna be that thrilled. They will see themselves. This course is for every student. When we're talking about identity, think about banks, prejudice reduction, bias reduction, all of those things our youth want to know. Because when they move out of high school, they're going on into the broader society.
Okay.
And I think a couple of things, and I see, Steve, you've opened up your mic as well. I want to offer to this comment because as Paquita mentioned, this, this came as a concern out of the gate from the focus group, right? Because we wanted to be certain, sitting as an elective, this is not an elective for our black and brown youth who are wanting to know more about their histories. So absolutely deservingly so. But we also heard from focus groups, why isn't this a requirement for all youth? Why isn't this something that we are recognizing as part of our American history as a course that is that important for everyone to understand? So until that occurs, even though obviously at the district level, they could make it a requirement, even though it's not required legislatively, districts can so choose if they really feel it is that, you know, it's going to, as you're suggesting, maybe curtail participation or make it only for youth of color, right? So those are some of the conversations we've been having with districts in the information sessions to be certain that, particularly in homogeneously white communities, how they were supporting this consciousness in relation to this course. One other piece you're going to hear a little bit later that Steve is going to mention is also how we're supporting districts in inter-district partnerships. And so districts who may be more homogeneous, you know, black, or maybe more homogeneous Latino. How are we supporting them? Because obviously, they will be implementing the course as designed, right? So across the state. It may be off by a couple of days or so, but not too far. So you might be able to have a Bridgeport, speaking with a Trumbull, speaking with a Franklin, all in the same conversation. And they may be, and be able to invite a speaker to engage with them. And so these are some of the things that I think, when we think about the pandemic and all that we did under the duress to develop this course of the, during the pandemic, it also created a mindset for us of asynchronous opportunities and synchronous virtual opportunities. It really helped us explore and expand our ideas of units of study so that we could be thinking about how we're going to connect our youth across the state. So that's a really great question. And Steve, I know you have some other comments.
Yeah, just a quick, this is Steve Armstrong. I'm a social studies consultant. And I could just tell you, from traveling around the state a bit, that some of the most, some of the very, very active and successful Black and African-American courses right now are taught in districts that we would call, quote unquote, suburban districts. And what they're eager to bring, and I know in talking to kids and teachers all across the state, there's many kids from all schools. And I think Michelle is right, that maybe last summer brought some of this on. But I can assure you, there's kids from all different types of schools in Connecticut that want this. Now, I will tell you honestly, the new part for this course, there's a, there's many schools that teach something. They call it African-American history, African-American studies. I think the very cool thing for our state is the new part of this course will be the Latin American, Puerto Rican studies side of this. Because that's a part of it that far fewer students are looking at in an in-depth manner. So that's why I think this course is so interesting. Because to many of those students that are deeply involved already in ethnic studies of one form or another, it'll bring in the Latin American side as well.
Right.
If I may, yes, thank you. In all of this, it's only as good as the way we package this and implement and communicate to districts. So I've, along the way, been making notes of how to message this as a State Department of Education with district leaders and that they may have to look at their structures in order to ensure access to this course. And what I mean by that is how they schedule it. What are they scheduling opposite of? You don't want to lock students out of this course. So looking at their schedule is going to be an immediate next step, I think, for districts in implementing and communicating the access to this course. So, I will, it's an excellent question. A lot of it is going to have to happen at the district level. But I do think partnering with that is what our communication and expectations are, as well as supports of what do they need to consider in order to ensure access to this course? So there's a lot structurally, I think, at the local level that will have to possibly change in order to do that.
Irene, that's such a wonderful, Irene, that's such a wonderful segue into actually the infrastructure support. So one of our committees, actually, very early on, this question came up before we even, you know, had, you know, our units of study drafted to be sure that this was accessible by all learners of high schools across the state. So I'm going to invite Steve to share with you some of the presentation we just delivered last Monday and Tuesday to high schools across the state. This was really a nice summary, I think, of some of the messaging we did there, Irene. Thank you.
Sure. I, I think what is, as everybody's saying, Irene, and everyone is saying, it's important that we get buy-in from the schools. And I think there's various ways to do this. I think a critical piece of this is, sure, get social studies teachers and get teachers interested. But I think we have to make the administrators of the schools and equally important guidance counselors of the school available, knowing about this course and knowing that, again, this is not designed. I think the critical point that's been made three times, this is not just designed to be valuable to one set of students or another set of students. This course is designed to be valuable for all kids. And we're putting, I mean, there's pathways, possibilities, pathways for learning possibilities. Certainly, this could be aligned with Portrait of a Graduate. So there's many ways to make this valuable. I think the thing that's brought up, and this is going to be a challenge, I think, for some schools and students, is the legislation does state that this has, this course is a full-year elective course, that it can't be done like half a semester, one year, half a semester, another year. That will be a challenge as schools are structured right now for some students to get into it. Because there's many students as juniors and seniors that would have a hard time fitting a full-year elective into their schedule. So that's something that we have to work on. And when should the course be offered? Well, you know what? That might provide a little flexibility. Because we would probably recommend that it be taken after the student takes his or her regular US history course, so it would build off that. But you know what? If a kid is really into this and, and the school rules allow it, let them take it their freshman and sophomore year. You know, that might be a way to get some of that end of, end of, you know, the kid's school year, end of their high school. If they can't fit it in at the end, if they can fit it in at the beginning, that's another way to go. We've decided that the best place to put this is in, is in the social studies department. You know, I, I think if you, when you look at the specific units, it was really based as a social studies slash history course. And I, we really think that's the best place. And I think personally, from having worked in schools for a bit, that it's better to have a course housed in a department. I think rather than this person in this school teaching it, this person in another school teaching it, well, there's some value to that. But I think if you house a course in a department, you get overall more support for the class. I think, however, but there's already, I know there's six or seven schools that are talking about team teaching this. But yes, the course could be based with a social studies slash history person, but it's also, you're gonna have an English person coming in. There are gonna have a world language person coming in. So even if the course is specifically designed to, with a social studies teacher, let's find ways, let's find ways also to get other staff people involved. Now, each school also has a way, has rules on how many kids have to be in a course before it can run. Like some schools say, unless you have six kids, the course can't run. Unless you have eight kids, the course can't run. That's different from school to school. And I don't think we could buck that in this. But what we would, and we would work very carefully with schools to find out that any kid that wants to take this, we want to find a place for them to do it, even in a school where there may not be enough kids for the actual class to run. We're talking about independent study possibilities. And as Michelle mentioned, how about if there's two schools next to each other that both have a few kids that want to take it, or more than a few kids? Let's find ways that we could have those schools working together to create the course. So we don't want any kid that wants to take this not to be able to take it. As far as the teacher, you know, each school will pick who will take, who will teach this? I mean, it's, is it important that the teacher know a lot about these subjects? Well, if not, if we have some new teachers teaching this, that may happen. That's why the professional development we're doing for this is so important. Because there's not going to be that many teachers that are going to know a lot about African-American history and a lot about Latin American history and African-American history. We have to provide the professional development for that. But just as important in the professional development, I think, besides content knowledge, it's, this is like real important for professional development for this course, I think, is how do you teach, how do you conduct those difficult conversations? How do you carry on those racial conversations in a classroom? And there's, I think, the PD that's done, the professional development that's done for teachers, it's just as important that they get that part of it, I think, than they get the content piece. Both are important. But I, this is, this course is really designed that we have discussions, we have inquiry activities that, that will engage students. The last thing I think we want is this course to be a course where somebody's lecturing about these topics all the time. The last thing I think we want is this course to be a course where somebody's lecturing about these topics all the time. Although there's times the lecture might be appropriate, but we really want this to be an engaging course. And when I talk about inquiry instruction, in social studies, the inquiry art, the way to do inquiry instruction. The last stage is that is taking informed action. And this is not going to be for every kid, certainly. But what we, wouldn't it be great if this course, out of what kids learn in this course. They quote unquote took informed action. That out of this course, they did things in their community. They were engaged in community activities. That taking informed action to me would, um. Would be a fantastic goal for many students to take this. As far as budgeting, a lot of schools, I, I think schools are worrying about textbooks and things. I think the CIRC was going to provide a, a bunch of materials. I don't know that there's a textbook that we would recommend at this point. But we will provide, be providing districts with like lists of materials that they would, um, that they, they would use. I think, again, this is important that these classes be places where discussion can take place. I know I'm saying that for the second time, but I think who should teach this? It should be somebody that can do that. It should be somebody that knows the content knowledge. But boy, if they, cause you know, a lot of classes don't have this, and this would be a great place to do it. Um, but this is a very exciting class, and if you have any questions about. How will we promote this? I, I, I think you, I, I mean, I'm not saying that's not going to be a challenge because of some tactical reasons. But you know what? I think you'd be surprised. Or maybe not in the amount of kids from all districts in Connecticut that would be interested in taking this course.
And thank you so much. Here, here's the, uh, Willa, before you, you, thank you so much. Here's the thing, and I'm going to be very candid. I think the board is really your advocate. I don't see any opposition from board members. We are all buying into what you're saying. We all believe in what you're saying. Nevertheless, I think we need to play the role of, uh, contrarians and sort of question you. One of the things that I'm looking at in all these, um, recommended, um, way of getting buy-in. I don't see parents. Uh, I, the parents are absent. And in prior instances where topics have been introduced to schools. The parents have been one of the groups that have said, no, 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 that course is not really history. That calls courses indoctrination. So I'm concerned about how are you going to talk to parents to prevent that? And I also want to hear from Erin because Erin had said that she was aware that there may be opposition. And I, I trust Erin and Willa's perspective in terms of questioning. I write that we question you here today. With your understanding that we're all supportive, we're all a hundred percent supportive of your work that has been done. And what you're doing and what this means. So the question is, is important because I want to go to the board. Ensuring that, you know, we can answer those questions and we will be, um. Again, presenting it as a unified, um, committee. So Erin and then I will that. Do you have any questions, any, any concerns regarding what we have heard so far?
Thanks, Estella. I don't have any information exactly where the opposition is coming from at all. Um, Ingrid might, I don't know. Um. I think as the board will know that through public participation soon, as that, as those start rolling in for our next board meeting. Um, I just, I, I just want to echo Malia's comments that she made at the beginning. And I've seen from the very start when this first came out and I've sat on some of these presentations. This is just such a wonderful curriculum. Um. I'm pretty sure that anything that does come our way, that this committee, um, as well as the agency. Will be able to be prepared to answer all those, or maybe complaints or concerns that come forward. I, I'm not, I'm not concerned with that, but you know, you never know. But may, maybe if Ingrid has more on that, I'll, I'll refer to her.
Ingrid, could I say, do you mind if I said one, one more thing and then I'll give it to Ingrid? Would you guys mind?
No, go ahead.
Okay. I, I think, I don't know if this is concern, but I think one issue that's been raised. There was a number of, of educators who have thought that teaching. Instead of teaching this as separate masters, that this should be taught as like a unified thing. That, you know, we should be teaching instead of one semester of Latin America, another semester. Um, you know, uh, African American, that was an issue, one issue of contention. So, uh, that by some teachers, so just that was one area that I want to bring up, that there was some division. Sorry, Ingrid, I apologize.
No, thank you. If you don't mind, I can answer a little bit of the family question. So go ahead, Ingrid.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you. Um. These are some amazing questions and the opportunity that has been provided for the committee to actually bring these questions forward to us. For the anticipation of what might happen during the full state board meeting. So some of the concerns that have been raised by the particular group that they are organized. In order to be able to really, um, emphasize that from the inception of this curriculum. Student voice was essential. Because it was about the students who actually came forward before the legislators to say. This is a necessary curriculum. This is a curriculum that needs to represent who they are as a strength, not as a deficit. So some of the concerns that they had already been voiced through this committee have been about. Uh, Steve did mention, one of them is about the separation of the curriculum. Uh, in what it seems to be two curri- two, two courses versus one. And that we brought it forward to the legislators, uh, to the education committee members. To, to the chairs of the education committee to make sure that they were, that we were clear of the direction. So the compromise that it was reached, as you were all aware, at the beginning of this legislation was two different, actually legislations that were. Put forward, two separate legislations. So the legislators came together and put it together as one. And it became this full course that represents the histories of these cultures, identities. So therefore the approach to do it this way is to make sure that the foundation is built. And it continue, is a continuum with the foundation. So if you begin to see the units develop, even though today was presented as. Unit one from one curriculum and unit four for the other curriculum, they build on each other. And that is going to be the essence of this. The other piece is about, there were some que- questions and concerns by the group. Regarding the in, the, the, the feedback and input from students. When the comments came to us, we were very clear from the beginning of this development. We knew that, that we were going to be presented with some, um. Really passionate questions before us. And I put it in the concept of passionate because we need to see every single question as an opportunity. And we know that that was going to happen. Because this is not fully public yet. It is not completed. We are very, um, optimistic that the questions that are going to come before are already answered. Some of them are already answered through the development. So when this is going to be presented and some of the questions that are going to be coming forward. They already have been addressed. First of all, the input of the students, as it was shared with all of you, has been part of the process. As it was presented to the interview that it was conducted by, um, the media. It is already, the students have spoken. The students input, when they said, it is not what we have to learn, but what we want to learn. And that is exactly how this has been developed. And every voice that had was spoken in front of the legislators was used to this process. So we are very confident that those concerns that have been put forward are creating actually for us. The opportunity to really emphasize how critical this course of studies, studies is, is going to be. Because at the end of the day. It is about our histories. It's about who we have become as this nation and those who have contributed. To who we are and how we pave the future. And for all of our students, and I wanted to address this earlier, the question that came. For all of our students, every single one of the students, the empowerment that is going to come from understanding. How the United States became to be the United States, but the contribution of every single history before us. So, um, it's exciting. And every question that is presented, we see it as an opportunity and we are ready to, to say. This course, it is not one that goes into a shelf. This course is the one that is going to be shaped every single time. An event in our nation calls for us to address it and develop a foundation, a venue to be able to do that. Those critical conversations. How do we engage in conversations about the event that happened May 25th? George Floyd. How do we engage in conversations in the impact of the life? That it was lost to the lives of our students, our students of color, our black and brown students. And our white students. What is the impact? This course of study provides that foundation. It needs to be fluid. It needs to provide for the opportunity of advocacy, critical interrogation, critical literacy. It has to create that so that we all can continue to build the histories of the country together. So I'm, I'm excited because those questions, those challenges serve as our marketing as well. The interest is there. The interest is there. Thank you, Dr. Lott.
Thank you, Ingrid. And I, I need to, maybe, because I, I have not allowed a Willa to ask her very important question, so.
So I just wanted to, I just wanted to write, so when we work with families and in the research, and you made. Obviously, you know, you may know this, that communication has been the biggest, uh, factor. For, to help increase achievement. It's not a direct relationship. Rather, it helps parents to understand what's going on in school. So we know that from the research. So we, because know that, and I usually, when I take a lot of phone calls at CIRC around special ed from parents. I, I know why they're calling, not that the issue is not important. But the first thing I say to them is, listen, you're an awesome parent for calling me. Why do you say that? Nobody's ever told me that. Because you're calling me, right? So what I find that the real issue is that they're not being heard to. They're not being listened to. So with, with this, uh, professional learning plan, we are very mindful of that. And we know that we need to listen to what families are saying. But at the same time, we need them to have that conversation with us. That is a two-way conversation. When we engage in conversations with the families in ways that are, they are feeling hurt. They're okay with what we put on the table, but if we're not, in our plan, this is the reason why. We have, we're very mindful of helping parents understand truly what the course is about. So that any fears that they may have or may not have, this is going to be helping them, right? So it also, we, we also look at it from the perspective of from the personal story, right? Taking this course is going to help their children, you know, have a diverse experience. And college admissions are going to look at the type of courses they're taking, right? So this is really important that our parents understand that. But at the same time, we are inviting them to have this two-way conversation. Because we know communication is the biggest factor for achievement.
Okay, thank you. I will, like, go ahead. I'm sorry for not allowing you to ask questions.
Estella, patience is a virtual. Um, it's, but I'm going to shift my question. Cause, cause, um, most of you, and I think you answered the question about the whole, the whole, uh, who's going to be teaching. I, you know, the professional development of these faculty, I mean, teachers that are going to be teaching it. But I'm hoping as, as, as a member of, of the state board. That the, the public hearing that, uh, that we, that, that's going to come up soon. I'm hearing, I'm hoping that there is a diverse student body that's advocating for this curriculum. I'm hoping it's a diverse student body that's advocating for this curriculum. Okay? Disselective, uh, courses for African American, Latino, X.
I, I will that, that's an excellent suggestion to have students. Present in the public comment advocating for this curriculum. That's an excellent suggestion. So.
Because we heard, exactly, because we heard, we heard that this is what they want. This, remember, I, I immer- when Estella said to me, put yourself in the student's shoes. I put myself in the student's shoes. And so I, it's something that is important to me. And it's going to be important to my diverse community. Okay? You know, we've got more interracial marriages. We've got more students that are dating folks from China, from, uh, all over the country. And they need to learn to appreciate, as, 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 uh, as the gentleman said to us. The importance of that they learn to appreciate each other. So that's what we're looking for. So there is a buy-in to this. And, and hopefully, and, and, and those folks that are, that are a little confused or what direction. Cause, cause it also, I'm holding in front of me an East Hartford Public High School transcript. And I'm reading World History, USA History Honors, right? And I wanted just briefly, um, Dr. Laba, I mean, how relevant is this World History and USA History courses? That this particular student shared with me taking that's relevant to this African American and Puerto Rican curriculum? Or is it totally different?
So the, yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Gladys.
Okay, Gladys.
The, what, what was exactly the question? I'm sorry.
Okay, so I purposely, after reading the, the, um. I glanced through the, the whole semester and, and what you sent to us. There, I, I purposely, a student of mine shared with me her, her transcript, and she, and it's reading World History. And it's also reading USA History Honors. So I wanted to see if, uh, do they teach about African American in this USA World History courses? That are taught out at the high schools? Um, cause, cause are, is, is there going to be an, an overlap in terms of maybe? Cause I, uh, I, I mean, I just want to be able to see what the difference is between what these courses. This World History and this USA History Honors. And I didn't ask the student, I, you know, and I, and I will, I'll meet her next week. But I'm curious to know.
I can even could probably answer it more in depth, but I'm looking at it from the role of a high school principal that I was for 27 years. They do speak about African American history, yes, but not in the depth that this curriculum does. And this curriculum really breaks down those stereotypes that we learn in, in, in some of these, uh, curriculum areas. Um, and I could just tell, you know, and, and I'm sure that Stephen could have more, uh, examples exactly on to that effect. But we see this, especially Latino curriculum, uh, really in my experience in the high school. They have no discussions on Latino except for the Spanish American war. And the only thing we hear is a Puerto Rico was seated to the US, and that was it. And that was of course an incorrect wording of it. But I'm just saying that they are, uh, this curriculum is so powerful. Because it truly goes into student identity. It goes into the history. And also the sources that it has, the primary sources that are given to the teachers are very powerful. And I have to thank CIRC for putting everyone together to have these difficult discussions. Because that really, this curriculum is powerful because of the people that were in it and having these very, very difficult discussions.
Okay, thank you.
Address that, I apologize just for one sec. On the world history, you know, you did this, the world history would set the base for this course. But I can tell you, because you remember, many times in a world history, you, everyone in this room probably had a course like this. With something like World's History, 1600 to the present or something like that. So, you know, uh, the unit on, on ancient African civilizations, which would be an early unit of this. Rightly or wrongly, for time factors, probably in that world history class that the student took in ninth grade or something. Was probably done in two or three days.
Yeah.
So, so I think the world history classes that most kids are taking will provide the base for this. But it's not a repetition of this. I think US history courses, respectfully, I think a lot of teachers are teaching US history class with some of this in it. But I, I think why, why, I think a US history class that most kids take, again, will provide a nice basis. For what they would learn in this course. And I would agree totally with Gladys and others that have said. Where this will be a lot of new material for students will be on the Latin American, Puerto Rican side. Cause I would admit to you, you look at most curriculums, there's far less of that than African American.
Okay. And I, I would only offer, I would only offer, Willa, that.
And I I would only offer, I would only offer, Awilah, that this is one of the reasons for the suggestion for the elective to be taken in the junior and senior year, after those courses and that foundational knowledge has been established. And so that the students who elect to take this course can go deeper with those histories. So in the desired results, you'll see how we connect to history, geography, world history, civics standards that students are also receive, just to add that.
Awilah.
Thank you, Estella. I'm all set. Thank you all. Yes.
Okay, I do have a question that I wanna make sure that I understand. Part of the challenge with Latinx population is the fact that we are classified in the census as a race, and we're not a race, you know? And so I I know that race in the Latinx course is present, but how are you going to be addressing the issue of race for the Latino and the Latino Puerto Rico?
So in that, that's actually, thank you for the question, that's unit one. We are going to talk about, you know, they have, there's a video from the New York Times, our own Latinos and Race and what that looks like, and how we are, you know, Latinos and versus race versus ethnicity, and how do we identify ourselves, right? So as you know, the, this year, the census did change that and only wrote Latino, which is fine as an ethnic group. But we are having the students grapple with that question, what what is my identity like? What is my race? I'm calling myself Puerto Rican, but is that really a race? So they are going to study, like, you know, semester one is going to talk about race as a social construction, and we're gonna go in depth with that social construction for what that looks like in, for Latinos, with the understanding before that, that they're going to see, you know, the arrival of the colonizers, the enslaved people, and the enslaved indigenous, and what all of this brought, right? And that racial hierarchy is going to be looked at as a racial caste and racial hierarchy. Based on that, where I, we call to the gradational browns, the different skin colors, and what that looks like, almost like a pyramid, right? So they are going to talk about that. There is an assignment that they have to create a TikTok video around what do they call themselves and who they are, and also a personal card around their own culture and what that looks like. They're going to learn about those labels, am I a Latino, am I, what does that mean? We know in schools, they don't really use that Latinx, it's not a term they use, the students use Spanish. So they're going to learn, you know, what does that mean? Why are you calling yourself Spanish if you are not from Spain? And how does that work out? And that intricacy of race in that sense, does that help you?
Oh, absolutely. Thank you. No, I I I see, I saw that, but I wanted, you know, to have the, again, I'm this student, so I wanted to hear more about how you were going to approach it. You know, again, I think the board will be very receptive, we should not have any problem with what you're presenting. My concern is, you know, and I I'm gonna raise it, I'm gonna be very candid with all of you. As you are very much aware, this is a very divided country, you know, and we do know what needs to happen. So I'm I'm concerned that in this divided citizenship that we have, people see a a course like this as not something that needs to happen. So that's what I'm, not the students, because I think the students are the best part of all of this. But some parents, some families may be threatened by by what the intent of what we're trying to do and accomplish. So I'm trying to anticipate any conflict that may come and to be very supportive of this work. So it's very successful. That that's sort of my 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 perspective. I don't know if Awilah or Erin, if you have any any comments on any additional comments or questions.
Yeah, no, I I agree with you, Estella, a hundred percent, one hundred percent. But I also wanna wanna just kind of give you some up. In higher education, the Latinx is common. That that's what they're using now in universities, okay? Because it embarks, okay, don't forget, it embarks, okay, gender, race, okay? The, you know, it, so when, if we're talking in high school, and then we change, then we're talking about what it is to be Latino, what it is to be Hispanic, but then they go to college, they also need to understand that there's there's something called Latinx, that it embraces everyone, okay? And 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 so there, that's, yes, somebody said so, yes.
I I did, I wanna, I wanna just comment, Awilah. There was extensive conversation in the Content Development Committee on the Puerto Rican Latino Group about this very dialogue, right? And so we don't call it Black X or White X, why do we call it Latino X, right, or Latinx? And so in the, in this unit that Nita just described, as well as in a later unit, the students actually explore where that Latinx definition came from and why. And they actually are going to state a claim, do we think it's okay that this movement is going in this direction? Or do we counter that narrative, right? And say, no, I am a Latino Latina, and this is my identity, right? So that's, we've actually, so that's an example of pop culture, of current context, of how we've actually lifted and built into the identity structure of that particular unit. So I love that you raised that, but I need to share with you, that was a really deliberate conversation and division, well, not division. Just, you know, some counter perspectives, right? Even within the committee itself. And so it was so wonderful that that then evolved into lesson development, right? Because as you said, in the student's shoes, this is what they're wrestling with daily with their particular identity. And so as a white woman, right, I need to be knowing what I need to be, you know, identifying with myself, right? And how my teachers choose or choose not to identify, and I shouldn't make any assumptions. But that would be very important learning for me, right? And so going back to what some of the questions were earlier in regards to the concern about indoctrination versus history. And so I think what some of what you see here are some of our proposed implementation considerations to really debunk that and to really build the understanding of why this is important for all of our youth to participate. So we did have some of those information sessions just last week to Dr. Lopez. We are going to prepare like a PSA that will be an orientation that schools could utilize for their parents, right? And it will be authored in both English and Spanish so that each high school will be able to facilitate and guide these conversations at the local level. The Comprehensive Professional Learning Plan, we also shared with you in our last last material submission. Please know that that wasn't per se part of CIRC's responsibility. But as you heard from the focus groups, it was from the onset that important that teachers knew that that was going to be available to them to support their implementation. So we actually have that in draft form. Ingrid will speak a little bit more in regards to, you know, funding opportunities for that, et cetera, et cetera. We also are thinking about book bundles for each school. So really centralizing that, one, to reduce the burden on the districts in regards to what book, what selection, how do I, you know, how do I get? But also because of the quantity, so the reduced discount when we're purchasing, purchasing, you know, hundreds of books versus one or two books for a department or school library. We also offered in the curriculum opportunities for what we're calling Speakers Bureau. So people who actually sat and wrote the curriculum, our historians, our scholars, our educators, who could visit either through a recording or through a live, again, virtual session or in person, you know, that day ever comes to be for us. But actually creating a Speakers Bureau for teachers who maybe aren't as familiar with some content, but certainly wanting to be sure that that perspective is brought into the classroom. The home links are also a strong part of the curriculum and unit development. UBD templates are familiar, Understanding by Design templates are familiar by most districts. But that home links piece, you'll see, was a very important feature. And so as youth are learning this information and then excited about it, where do I go to engage in this conversation? Other teachers, other youth, but how do I go home and engage with, maybe there's information that is different from beliefs and values that I was raised with? And how do I engage purposefully? So we were very sensitive to what that might look like, Awilah, for a white student versus a black student versus a Latino student. The Lesson Repository is also something that we are considering for implementation. The State Department will have an electronic source for curriculum sharing. And that is where we're hoping that as teachers are utilizing the great curricula and developing their own lesson plans, that they're getting feedback, obviously, through some of those initial professional development offerings. And those will then be uploaded for other teachers across the state to share and utilize. We spoke about the inter-district collaborations to support the interracial discourse when necessary, to be sure multiple perspectives are part of the conversation. And then finally, the conversation with the legislators, we have that that twenty-one, twenty-two year should really be considered a field study because this curriculum development has been done this past year all behind the scenes. And to really have an opportunity for teachers and students to engage in a feedback loop with us to tell us what was really exciting, what was really boring, what was not long enough, where we needed to go deeper, right? So lesson sequence, all that type of thing. So we're really hoping those initial implementers that come on that first year are willing to engage with us in that field study support. So as we close out, I'm going to ask Ingrid to talk about our next steps so that we could prepare for our submission to the State Board.
Thank you so much, Michelle. I'm being conscious of the time, so I will do this very, very brief for all of you. So one of the things that we had planned at the very beginning, when this became CIRC's responsibility as per the legislative mandate, was that we wanted to make sure that as we were collecting and developing this curriculum, it actually will become part of history, meaning the development, the actual development of the curriculum. Who was involved, the multiple perspective, the conversations that took place as part of the committees. So we actually completing a documentary of the development of the curriculum, that it will be part of the full package with the, of the information that will be disseminated as part of the curriculum. Also, a part of the communication and marketing of all this is the 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 input, the input and the passion of the students, they have come through it. So therefore, everything that we have collected, it is for public information, through the website, all the information. So this is going to be an essential piece, so the districts can actually use all this information. So between November and December, that this, all this is gonna go back to the Integrations and Assessment Committee and to continue the preparation for the full document to be submitted to the to to the State Department of Education. I want to focus on December second for just a minute, given the information that you have shared with us and in in your support. I would like to ask, if you can really be specific with us, thinking about your colleagues, thinking about everything that we shared with you today, what would you like to see as part of the package that is going to be submitted to the full board? Because that is going to, as you can tell, we have tons of information. But we want to be very, very strategic, explicit, concrete, while at the same time, really addressing your questions presented today and those ones that you might generate later on. So I would like to spend a few minutes and ask my colleagues if we can definitely collect this information so that we are very clear, or what are some of those items that you feel should be part of the package that will be presented to your, the full board and your colleagues?
I I I think, Ingrid, what what has been presented today makes sense. You know, in in terms of providing the information. I think doing briefly, you know, one unit from each of the curriculum would be also, you know, valuable. I do think, what Awilah mentioned in the beginning, you need to make sure in the polling participation, you have support from teachers and from students. That's very critical. Polling participation, I'm assuming the meeting is gonna be through go-to meeting, that is not going to be a meeting in in person because of COVID becoming, the rates going up. So they can be, the comments can be presented in emails and and that we should have to ensure that, you know, everybody at the board level sees the 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 support. I don't anticipate any, necessarily any opposition. I think you'll be, you know, a very more supportive, the entire board. They're new board members, so I don't know how they necessarily will, I'm sorry, my phone is.
Yeah, I wanna add, I wanna add to Estella, just I do wanna, I do wanna support all of us. Also, what are the benefits in terms of helping these young students become productive citizens when it comes to this curriculum? What are they gonna get from it? You know, especially now with with so much social injustice, so much racial tension going on, okay? That we learn to appreciate each other, okay? And and we, and 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 we're bringing a a society together because because of what we're hearing now, all the divisiveness and all and all the hatred that that we have to encounter as as people of color, okay? So therefore, I really, if I if I'm there, I wanna hear where, how effective is this curriculum going to impact these these students so that they can bring it back to their families and their bodies and communities? So that it, so it becomes, it doesn't become a vicious cycle. It becomes a reality as society is, they built into their families and so forth. And they become our best lawyers, our best politicians, even our best president someday, so that they can bring this. That's what I'm, I want, I want something that's gonna really discuss high-impact practices, okay? And and later on, I mean, we, I mean, the discussion is even taking them abroad, taking them to Africa so that they know, taking them to Puerto Rico, taking them to South or Central America, with the collaboration of higher education institutions who do study abroad, who have centers of international education. That's a, that would be a great experience for these kids, because you know, our population, these kids, they want action, they want hands-on. They wanna be able to write their stories. And hopefully, that, that, if I'm sitting there, that's what I want to hear.
Thank you so much. We really appreciated all of your feedback regarding those points. Also, as as you can see, we have a couple of dates coming up. Once we present to you the information and based on the feedback and the actions of that particular meeting, we will go back and revise if necessary. And then, as we, it was mentioned earlier, we are, we have developed dates that are ahead of schedule when submissions need to be made, but we wanna make sure that we stay with these dates so that we can continue the process. I remember when Dr. Hickey and I sat down together to begin to really outline the year of development. And to be here this moment presenting to you, it is just, for our perspective from CIRC, incredibly exciting. Because in the midst of all this, there was a pandemic. In the midst of all this, there was such racial unrest. In the midst of all this, this political unrest. And here we are, talking about a curriculum that we know is needful. So I just wanted to express my deepest gratitude for this opportunity. And before I just stop my my comments, I just wanna actually present, provide you with some of the concerns that were brought forward by the by the particular group. And I want to do this because I wanna to make sure that you know that these things have been addressed as part of our conversation. And the group that brought this forward was the Anti-Racist Teaching and Learning Collective. And it's it's a lengthy members, a list of members. But some of the things that they wanted to address were the separation of the curriculums. In addition to that, the assignment of the course primarily to history teachers. In addition, they talked about the inequity, the funding, issues about funding, that they have concerns and resources. Teacher training and development, displacing existing classes that have already in place. Some some schools are already having this type of courses, they talk about anti-racism. So they wanna make sure that those classes are not being misplaced, oh, displaced, my apologies. In addition to that, they mentioned about the school's implementation challenges. And we had this conversation ourselves. And the last, the last one that they addressed was the lack of student participation and oversight. So as we mentioned, definitely, student voice was part of it. The oversight piece, I think I will couch that under the piece of early implementers and innovators when this go public. So we wanna make sure that we are conscious about what's happening because this has to be a living, fluid document that these perspectives are accountable for. So I just wanted to provide you with that information because you will hear this as part of the your full, the full meeting, that these concerns are being brought up. that these concerns are being brought up. But I also wanted to share with all of you that we actually have scheduled a meeting with the group and the legislators to address some of their concerns directly. Because it came from them and we want to make sure that we provide that information to them as much as we can provide publicly before the, the board approves any of the content moving forward. So I just wanted to provide you with that information as well. And with that said, again, thank you so much.
Thank you. Irene, do you have any, any comments or suggestions, anything else?
No, not at this time. I would just maybe add that if what we were sent, your committee was sent and I also was sent, thank you very much, Irene, that perhaps the full board maybe get a hard copy of that prior to the board because it is, it's a lot of reading. And so we generally do get hard copies, but haven't been getting them lately. But this might be a document that board members would like to have a hard copy to mark up and maybe have some questions.
Sure. So we are, absolutely. We are preparing an executive summary and we'll have the attachments. And we'll work with Aldis to see how we can get the hard copies to you.
Okay. Good, good suggestion, Irene. I, Irene, in terms of process, I don't have a quote right now. But I think what I can say, because Malia expressed her support, is that the committee fully supports moving ahead this item for the agenda of December second. I think that's not going against any, any procedural steps.
It's already out of the agenda, yes.
Okay. And, and that could be noted in the minutes that we fully support, the committee fully supports moving ahead this proposal to the December second agenda, okay?
Thank you.
Is there anything else, any, any other item, anything else? Yeah.
Yeah. So Dr. Lopez, just for clarification, I want to be certain we're replicating what we did for you today in materials. So we can certainly be sure that Irene has all of that. The units of study, though, are quite lengthy. So maybe just the two sample units and then the link for the remaining, is that okay?
Yeah, yeah. I, I think, again, yeah, my, my, my perspective, like, you know, I will immediately got it, you know, being a former, is to see how it feels in the classroom.
Yes.
So, you know, it doesn't mean that you do everything, but just to, to get a sense.
Okay. So we will, Irene, have that to you for your packet for Wednesday? And then does anyone, does anyone know in regards to the amount of time? So obviously, we had a full hour and a half with you today. Do we know the time will be available? Okay.
Okay. Here, here's what I will tell you. And, you know, you know these teachers, because all of you are teachers. We tend to pay attention for twenty minutes and then you begin to lose us, okay? So you have to really understand, you can provide it in writing, but you need to pick what are the, what are the, the highlights. I think you're all very knowledgeable, you're very passionate. And I applaud that passion. It comes through, you know, in, in, even in, in the technology, it comes through, passion comes through. So that's, that's absolutely wonderful because this is a, the, the result of a work that is done, has been done with a lot of love and, and respect. But I think you need to say to yourself, what is it that is needed for the board? And then the board, the best part usually is when people ask questions because the question is the inquiry, as we had discussed. And we probably, you know, the three of us will probably be very quiet. It probably will be the other board members that would have questions in terms of regarding the curriculum. I think the, the, from my perspective, and in my, I invite my fellow board members to, to add, the fact that this is not a curriculum that was done in isolation, that you have so much participation and so much input from all those groups, that's critical. To me, that's a critical perspective, especially scholarly. And a support from, you know, established scholars that gave the curriculum the credibility it deserves. The fact that you're going to be, you know, do a, a trial in, in next year and then implement it. The fact that you're working in faculty development. And also, you know, from my perspective, parents, parents may see the curriculum and not understand why it's needed. You know, why does my child need this curriculum in terms of, you know, their, their preparation? So to me, that's, that's important. And finally, what does the curriculum feel like and look like? In, in terms of, again, what you're covering and what you're trying to, to accomplish? That's very simple, you know, in my mind. And I'm talking Estela's perspective. And that doesn't mean that my fellow board members think the same way I do, so.
We will connect with the group as we finalize the preparation of our executive summary and the appropriate attachments. So we'll take care of that. Thank you.
Good. Anyway, no, I really want to thank all of you. This is really a product of intensive work that it's, you know, shows dedication and commitment to, to, to educate our students about who they are, what they are, and their background and contributions that, that there, that have been done. So we can better move our society ahead. So thank you so much from our perspective, you know, from taking time and being patient with us in asking all kinds of questions. And, and we are your advocates, we really are. If I need to go to the legislature, you know, I'd be glad to go and support this curriculum. So whatever I need to do, I'm very happy to do it on your behalf. So anything else, Irene, anything else in terms of the meeting?
No, thank you for the time and the opportunity to present the updates to you.
Thank you to everyone. I will, Irene, thank you for joining us. And thank you, Melisa, I didn't hear you talk for a day or days. Thank you. Good seeing all of you. Thank you so much.
I think just to have it on the record, we'll just need to adjourn our, our meeting, I believe.
Okay. So move to adjourn, Irene, I will, Irene, second, even though this, I'll second, so. We are adjourned. Thank you so much, Irene. Thank you, everybody. All right.
Bye-bye. Take care.
Bye.